It's nice to see so many faces out there, most of them smiling. My microphone? Yep, our microphones are on. Yep. So, welcome to the Select Board meeting of December 11th. We are in the firehouse. This is on the third floor. And we are very, very happy to see you today. Just a quick reminder, we are meeting again next week so that we don't meet on Christmas Day. And because that is not our regular meeting time, Cat TV will film this meeting next week, but it will not be live. Okay? So just want to say that upfront. So my name is Jeanne Jenkins. I have the pleasure of chairing this board. And I'll ask my fellow Select Board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Excellent. Thank you all. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our Town Manager, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes and did a really remarkable job on last, the last meeting's minutes, and also Jonas Spivak, who is our Communication Coordinator and also makes sure that all our technology works for our meetings. And last but not least, Josh Boucher, who is filming us live tonight for Cat TV, which we really appreciate. So we'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, without liberty and justice at all.
Tom, would you read the vision statement that guides all our work, please?
I will.
Thank you.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you. And now, because I forgot to do it earlier, I'm going to ask if we can amend the agenda. We have, want to remove both the presentation by the Bennington Police Department and also the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative. Both of those are tabled for tonight. Do I have a motion? Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. Sorry, I forgot to do that earlier. All right, consent agenda. For the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, Ed?
Okay. All right. Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, let's see. Page four, line 108.
On the minutes?
On the minutes. I'm sorry, on the minutes. I believe, and Stu confirmed, that it was Medicaid is their largest payer and Medicare was, there's, that's where the legislation is, I guess in Washington. So it should be Medicaid, our largest payer, not Medicare.
Great. Thank you. Any other? That was great reading, Jean.
I try.
Because there were a lot of pages in those minutes. Any other questions, corrections, comments? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, perfect. All right, we'll move on to public comment. Please remember, we have a timekeeper. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Comments are for the, the purpose of the public comment is to share information that is helpful to us all. And when you finish your comment, please take your seat. And then once everyone has finished public comment, if there are any comments, any responses that either the Select Board or staff want to make, then we will do it at that time. So, we have a lot of people. Asher, you're up first on ADA plan and sidewalks.
Thank you, Jeanne. Hi, everyone. My name is Asher Edelson. I live here in the town of Bennington. I apologize, I have not been at many Select Board meetings recently. I have had a busy year. Not too busy to have attended Bennington Regional Commission's ADA-centered focus group that met very recently. During which time, we discussed ways that we can aspire to make Bennington more accessible place for all. One thing that I would like to mention right now regards the definition of a person with a disability in the town's ADA plan. It mentions the person having to have either a mental or a physical disability. Does not include neurological or developmental. I mentioned this during the Regional Commission focus group. In other words, the disability that you're seeing here, Tourette's, is a neurological disability. According to the Town of Bennington ADA plan, I don't have a disability. I know that I do. So I would like to see that changed at some point in the future. We also discuss things like the Omni ballot, which is something that is in the ADA plan for the Town of Bennington, a fantastic resource if you know anybody that wants to vote, but either can't or struggles to do so. Additionally, I wanted to bring up sidewalks. I know sidewalk maintenance and expansion is more expensive now than it has been in the past. I would just ask that the Select Board considers the maintenance and expansion of sidewalks in future budgetary meetings. I know you already have. I'm just going to ask that you keep it up and keep up the good work. And that's all I got. Thank you. It's great seeing everyone tonight.
Thank you, Asher. Martha? Noise Pollution Part Two.
Martha Mackey, Bennington, Vermont. Last meeting, I gave a public comment about the physical and mental harm that noise pollution causes. I was really pleased at the positive reception by members of the Select Board and the interest expressed in addressing this issue. I didn't want to leave you guys hanging with just problems, so here's some suggestions at solutions. These suggestions are focused directly on mufflers and trucks, but are not limited to these suggestions. Yeah. So enforcement of noise ordinances, as we already discussed. But someone introduced me to the new technology of noise cameras. They work like speed cameras, but can detect excessive noise and record license plates. One or two in the downtown would likely eliminate the need for direct police enforcement. Research and rerouting trucks. Is there a way for us to find out what trucks need to be going through the downtown for local services and restrict other trucks from going through? Also, while eliminating excessively loud noises as much as possible is critical, it's also important that we simply have respite from the constant barrage of noise altogether. Again, this is supported by broad scientific research on this topic. Here are some broader noise pollution solutions, which may also contribute to reducing muffler and truck noise. Visual indicators that cars are entering an urban area and traffic calming measures. Bennington is lovely, but it feels a bit like a blip on your way to somewhere rather than a destination in its own right. Let's make the downtown more visually distinct, a place to walk through, walk around rather than pass through. This also encourages traffic calming and increased pedestrian awareness. This can be done by changes in pavement color and/or materials, raised crosswalks, and perhaps "Welcome to Bennington" signs. People often express concern that these kind of measures may decrease people's willingness to come to town, but the evidence from other towns and cities suggests the opposite, that more walkable, pedestrian-focused towns draw people to them. Again, let's make Bennington a destination, a place to go for a date, walk around to the shops, grab dinner, listen to music, et cetera. Pedestrian priority streets and local traffic streets. We're limited in what we can do with Main Street and South Street, as these are considered major highways. However, many of our side streets also experience unnecessary traffic and noise pollution. Towns and cities all over the country are taking measures to reduce downtown traffic and make our streets places where pedestrians are given priority. This not only reduces noise pollution, but encourages walking and biking, reduces air pollution-
Martha, you have 30 seconds.
Encourages visiting local businesses. Pedestrian priority streets are a model which don't require a full shutdown of traffic, but instead make the entire street mixed use with pedestrian and bikes given priority. Green spaces. Being able to escape the noise altogether is essential for public health. This is why easy access to green space is a must in our urban areas. The research shows that having green space and walking distance helps lower heart rate, blood pressure, and stress. Green spaces also absorb and mitigate overall noise pollution. Maybe replace one of the large half-empty lots behind Main Street with a park. Taking measures like these improves public health. When people are healthier, they're happier, less of a burden to the healthcare system, and able to be more active members of society.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clark, does this say gift?
Correct.
Okay. Please come on up. I'm getting better.
Good evening. I remain Clark Adams of Bennington. I, in the spirit of the season and the nature of what we're all here for, and in honor of a local artist, there's something I'd like to gift to the town for hopefully to be displayed here in this room. I'm sure many of you have seen portraits of our local artists work here. So that's, that's what I'd like to do.
How wonderful. Thank you. Lovely. There's not even a place to put it. People can see it right now. Cat TV can see it yet. Okay. Thank you.
Clark, thank you.
Stuart, I'll leave it up to you as to whether there are rules, but it feels like we probably can do this here.
Can do.
Thank you. Let's see. Jack, you're up next with ECDC.
Office opening, sorry. Jack Rossermanly, Bennington, Vermont. And I am here to invite all of you to be what I believe, a part of what I believe to be Bennington history. This coming Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we will be hosting an office warming in ECDC's new permanent office space as an official office opening. And this is, to my knowledge, the very first multicultural community center in the history of the Town of Bennington. So come on down, enjoy some Afghan food, see what refugee resettlement is all about, and see our new office space. And in fact, you will have a chance to be a part of putting the finishing touches on our office and community space. If you come down, there will be some small volunteer opportunities in addition to food and good times. So 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. this Thursday, December 14th, at 120 Union Street, right here in Bennington, Vermont. There will also be a short program, starting at 12:00, with a couple of comments from ECDC folks and some local dignitaries about refugee resettlement. But we'd love to see everybody there, members of the Select Board, attendees at this meeting, and everybody watching at home on Cat TV. Spread the word. We'd love to see as many people as possible down there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jack. Let's see. Sam, you're up next.
Sam Mercino, Bennington, Vermont. I'm here to change the scenery instead of the podium. Last meeting, I spoke about COVID in Bennington and how I found out about the cases in Bennington. If you don't have family in a care facility, you have no idea of the cases of COVID. I took the liberty of calling the Vermont Department of Health today and had a good discussion with them. And there have been no Bennington banner reports on this, but there's still been 18 cases at CLR. The Veterans Home has got a handle on this. I don't know about the other agencies, the BHR, Southern Vermont Medical Center, Brookdale, Crescent Manor, the SVSU School District. I left a message with them. Being the weather conditions tonight and the gusty winds from out of the west, I'm calling a code blue. I know our Select Board members don't have a stance on code blue situation, but I am, it's calling to mind of the homelessness. And speaking of homelessness, we need to wrap around the word liability. I'm seeing too many people on the downtown of Bennington where they are, not divulging where the location is, but I do see it. And it's becoming more and more apparent now that they're out in these elements. This coming Saturday, September, I mean, yeah, September. December 16th, at the Vermont Veterans Home, is the annual laying of the wreaths across America. And we have a real good turnout on that. And yes, there will be snow. It seems to snow every year on that event. So Saturday afternoon or morning, if you want to show up and display the wreaths or if there are extras, you can place them on your own grave. So be it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam. All right, that concludes public comment. Is there anyone else out there that didn't sign up, that's wanting to speak? All right. Let's see. Of the comments that were made, Asher, I know you have worked with Paul Danzaro, who is our ADA, the town's ADA officer, about the language. And I don't know whether it makes sense for Paul to speak with BRCRC, but the language that we use is federal language. So, you know, so Stu, I'll pass that on to double-check with Paul if there is something that we can do there. You did mention budget meetings. They start the first Saturday in January at 8:00 a.m. in this room. So I don't know that sidewalks will be the first thing up. Maybe?
We haven't set the schedule yet.
Yeah. So, but, you know, please, please come and join us because we go through the budget line by line. So that's the time to talk about, you know, where you want your money spent and where, what you want left out of the budget. Okay? Say again?
No.
Sure.
Sorry. Talking about budget, this is Shirley Adams. I live here in Bennington. On the budget, when we have the budget meetings on those early Saturday mornings, could we ask the departments what we would lose if we held the budget the same? I know they always come in and they justify their budget. And I hear about the new programs or the new employee. But if we're trying to keep the budget small, it might be interesting to hear what we would lose if we were to keep the budget at the static level.
Okay. That's a good suggestion. What we do ask is, we ask to see the budget before, the budget as recommended and before Stu slashes it. So we always do ask, what did you want in the budget that is no longer there? But what you're suggesting is a twist on that. So I think that's a good thing to ask. But, you know, you are also welcome to be there and ask that. But that's a very good suggestion. All right. And then, I don't, Dan, I don't know if you wanted to speak to any of the noise pollution.
I thought they were excellent suggestions. I especially liked the pedestrian priority streets. Those are cool in Germany and all those ideas.
Super. Okay. All right. And again, Clark, thank you very much for the gift. And it's really wonderful, really, really wonderful. Anything else, guys? Ready to move on? All right. All right. So next up, we have Terrence White with us tonight. He's Executive Director of Green Mountain Express, except maybe it's really called Green Mountain. I'll let, yeah, I'll let you say what it really is. And we're really, really pleased you're here. Public transportation is really important to the community. And we're always looking at ways that we can better partner.
Bear with me, guys. Well, first of all, my name is Terrence White, Executive Director of Green Mountain Community Network, better known as Green Mountain Express. And one of the things, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Select Board, members of the community. It's nice to see a lot of familiar faces today. It's been a while since I've presented to the Select Board and the community based on some very wonderful updates in public transportation. Not just our agency, but throughout the state of Vermont. And one of the things is, when you're passionate about a service that you provide, that comes through in a lot of different ways. Because you want to talk to everyone about the services you provide and how they make a difference in your community. And public transportation does that. And very quickly, just a quick notes from the Executive Board here in terms of what we have done in terms to enhance not only what we do in the community, but what we do in terms of our staff, our drivers, and how they are impacted as well in providing that exceptional service. So we continue to build an employee engagement model where everyone feels important, valued, and heard. That means those that are taking customer service calls, helping the elderly and disabled in terms of customer service. And also in terms of what we plan to do with some upcoming initiatives for FY24. And at the essence of what we're doing is community outreach. And we'll get into that a little bit more later in terms of what we have done to enhance the human services in our community and as it relates to all of the different programs and partners that we have been, have the opportunity to partner with. Raising additional revenues to support operational costs to meet our 20% match. As most of you probably didn't know, since the pandemic, the federal funds and grant funding has funded public transportation at 100% for the operational cost. Okay? This is the first year where all transit agencies will be looking at coming up with different funding sources to meet their 50-50 match. And we'll get into a little bit more of that later as well. Some other updates in terms of the latest technologies and apps to make our service more fashionable and easier to use, at the same time improving our data collection. This is how we communicate to the public in terms of our ridership and services and the feedback that we get from our communities in terms of those services. Our plans also entails short and long-term strategic planning and mainly transportation planning. How to get to those critical areas for those communities who need public transportation. And because we're predominantly in remote or rural areas, all of the seven agencies are looking at those opportunities as well. We just completed our finalized 24 grant, as I mentioned. And I say the 50-50 in terms of operations is that the funding that we have received throughout the state and federal funds did a great service for the transportation agencies, especially during the pandemic. And I can't tell you all what that meant to us in terms of services. We continue to partner with Sunrise Family Resource Center. We support the Family Support Shuttle. We most recently partnered with the Vermont Food Bank in terms of Vagigo. And I'll explain and give you more detail on that as well. And then also for FY24, we have renewed our contracts in services and partnerships with COA, UCS, BPI, Medicaid, E&amp;D. Those are the major programs that we are partnered with in terms of services.
Terrence, could we ask you to just tell us what those are? Not everybody knows acronyms.
See, Counseling on Aging, UCS is United Counseling for Services. And of course, you know, BPI, Bennington Project Independence, and Medicaid, and E&amp;D, which is now older adults with disabilities. The projects that we're currently working on as well, and we have completed most of those. I think the last time I was here, I spoke a little bit about our electrification program, infrastructure in terms of being prepared for the electrical buses that were, and we're still waiting on those electric buses, by the way. And we're hopeful that they'll be here mid FY24. They're still undergoing all of the safety inspections at this point, but we look forward to when they arrive. We most recently installed solar panels at our agency, partnered with Green Mountain Power. And that's our commitment to renewable energy. And we receive credits for that. So we're very proud of that fact. And that's been a long-time project. I believe that started, that project started before I arrived at Green Mountain Express. And then a few facility upgrades in terms of access and security for our facility, in terms of surveillance cameras and our security gates, card access readers. So we're really proud. Those have been projects that we have been working on for some time now. And we're glad to put a wrap on those. Most of you don't know, or do know, that we serve approximately 17 different towns in terms of public transportation and making sure that those passengers get to their destinations. And also, we serve the critical care community as well. We have eight lines of service that we service here in Bennington, including our Manchester Express. So you see the blue line serves the central Bennington and hospitals on Dewey Street. Brown line serves the North Bennington and Bennington College in the East End. So the zoning of our public transit is such where we are able to provide services for the entire community. And we're looking at ways to expand that as well. This is probably one of the biggest projects that I'm very happy to say that at this point currently has taken off very well. This is our Manchester Express. The state, all the transportation agencies in the Vermont State area received funding for our microtransit pilot program. So we were very surprised and that we got the grant that we did to provide this service. This is a three-year pilot project funded by the Federal Transit Administration and the Vermont Agency of Transportation. And one of the things we looked at is why Manchester? Right now, Manchester is underserved when it comes to public transportation. We have one line, our orange line, goes to the main connector in Manchester. And that's predominantly it. So how do you service the community in which those areas need transportation? Happy to say that we launched our new service on August 1st of 2023. The service is a free on-demand transportation service for everyone in that identified zone. And I'll show you the zone in just a second. It takes you wherever you want to go within the boundaries between Monday and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Essentially, what the microtransit is, is sort of like a Uber cab, you know? It picks you up wherever you need to go. And our goal is to pick you up within the 30 minutes of your request. And you receive an estimated time of pickup and drop-off. And this is all done by three apps that we use. And all vehicles are equipped with wheelchair lifts. lifts. The reservations are required for the microtransit, and it's easy to make and can be done three ways. As I mentioned before, online, you follow the link if you go onto our website to be able to use the service by calling, and then also using the, or downloading the app from the Apple Store or Google Play. And I have to say, at this point, if you see the zoning map that's located to the left, right now, all trips related to the microtransit has to be within the zoning area. The good news that is that as this program exceeds and becomes sustainable, and we know that residents outside of the zone area are interested in that, we have the opportunity to expand that zone as much and also change the operating hours. Right now, we're also looking at the possibility of doing some weekend trips, Saturday and Sunday, and also extending the hours to approximately 8:00, 9:00 p.m. And this is a little data to show you what the service has been like since August 1st. As you can tell, it's a trajectory going up. Since that period of time, we have completed 1,282 rides, predominantly booked through the admin panel. That means, what that tells us is that mainly the older population feel more comfortable with calling in to book those rides as opposed to using the apps, which is about 46.1%. And the duration of travel time on a microtransit is anywhere from six to 10 minutes to get to your destination. One of the softwares that we use to collect all of the analysis is called Spare Software, and they provide all of the necessary data that we need to make sure that this is a sustainable service for years to come. And we actually included a survey in that data system that tracks average riders, whether they were, it was successful or not successful. Right now, we're at a 97% average review, which is outstanding compared to some of the areas in Vermont. And the most important thing is that once the microtransit in Manchester, one of the things, there was two studies done, if the service in Manchester is successful, well, what does that mean for Bennington County? Okay? Are we going to roll that out here in Bennington County? So we had a microtransit feasibility study done, and it was done statewide throughout the entire Vermont. It wasn't just Green Mountain Express, but it was all of the other seven transit agencies in the state of Vermont. And one of the things the study gives an overview of is what was evaluated was the potential for microtransit to replace its brown line. As most of you know or don't know, our brown line serves predominantly North Bennington area and also Bennington College. Okay? What does that mean if we replace the brown line and replace it with microtransit? That means on-demand service. So if I'm a student at Bennington College, I can go onto my app and request a ride right then and there as opposed to waiting for the bus to actually come as a fixed route. The study investigated there was two zones which would meet the needs of the goals of here in Bennington. One would provide the service in a focus zone, but allow the trips to and from Bennington Transit Center. And the second zone would provide service in an expanded area, Williamstown, North Adams, and even further. So we were looking at that. So what does, what does this mean in terms of service and cost for microtransit to come to Bennington? The study also recommended that GMCN proceed with the largest service demand, which is financially feasible for our agency, and the zone size and the potential for ridership with those two zones are anywhere between 25 to 50 passengers per day, which is an annual ridership, as you can see the numbers there. And for those who can't see, it's anywhere between 8,000 to 15,000 riders annually for our community. And at this point, annual budget would be anywhere from 225,000 to 450,000. That's what it would take to run microtransit here in Bennington with two vehicles with two potential zones. So like I said, this is great news, what it means for our community. When it, when we talk about all of the human services programs, and I keep referring to human services, I was participated in a tri-state meeting or summit just a few weeks ago with all of the other transit providers in the state. And one of the things that, topics that continue to come up was all of the human services that public transportation is involved in, okay? Not just Medicaid, not just elders and disabled individuals, but all of the other things, food access, that's one of the things that came up. So this year, for our fourth annual O&amp;D Summit, elders and persons with disabilities, a couple of things that we're looking at is the community driver outreach and potential. All of the agencies in the state of Vermont, including ourselves, we are looking to try to invest and get more community drivers to participate in these programs. You know, when I sit here and I talk about these services, these, these individuals are our family members, our mothers, our fathers, our uncles, our brothers, our sisters, and we look at ways to improve the program and increase participation in the community. That's what we need most of all when we talk about public transportation, is the support of the community, whether it be, you know, in servicing or getting behind a wheel, driving a vehicle, it makes an impact. We also train our drivers on evolving needs. We see a lot of old-timers passengers, so we get involved with the Old-Timers Association as well, not to mention, and I don't want to leave our E&amp;D partners out, which is the Bennington Regional Commission, also BPI, we also, the Bennington Senior Center, United Counseling Services, Southern Vermont Council on Aging. These are all critical programs and partners that help us accomplish in terms of providing those necessary transports. Our local transit providers throughout Bennington County, you see some, or throughout the state of Vermont, and you see as in terms of the demographics and areas, and this is open to all individuals, not just older persons and persons with disabilities. You know, we do the non-Medicaid critical care, that's kidney dialysis, cancer treatments, the non-medical transports that we do in terms of mental health, dental and eye care, mills, and I was getting ready to say mills or will, but essentially, that's what we provide as well. So when we talk about those needs for the public and how we play an intricate role in providing those services, this is something that we, our agency, is very proud of because GMCN is the model transit agency in the state of Vermont for this program. Okay? And when I first was approached by the state in terms of participating in the Vermont Food Access Program, there were a few things. I wasn't, I wasn't sure how public transportation could really play a part in that. There's a couple of things that I always look at in terms of services. Community impact, how does it impact our community to have programs such as this? You know, and you think about the older adults with disabilities, you think about Medicaid, you think about seniors centers, you think about the refugees, and, and all of those individuals who are coming to not only Bennington County, but to the state of Vermont, and approximately 260 adults and children have resettled in Vermont. These are Afghan, Afghanistan families and Haitian families who have moved to Vermont. I had the opportunity, I think it was the first families that they reached out to see if we could provide public transportation for, I believe, six families right here in Bennington. We were able to provide transportation for their children to get to school, able to transport the parents to places of employment, to medical appointments, and that played a huge role. So when I think about the Vermont Food Access and human service initiatives, how does that play a part, and how do we partner that up with public transportation? So I don't know how many of you know Ashley, but she is the Executive Director of the Vermont Food Access, wonderful person, very passionate what she does in terms of feeding people in Bennington County and making sure that they have the necessary resources. But also in addition to that, this, this topic, or human service initiative, as we call it, is starting to look at it as statewide initiative. That means all of the other transit providers and the state of Vermont is looking at how to get involved in this food access initiative program to provide access to food for members in Vermont. Okay? The designated, one of the things we look at is how does, the designated food access locations, how do we get them there? What makes sense in terms of planning? And one of the things we came up with, not only with the location here at Bennington, which is right over up at Willow Park, but also in Manchester, we'll get into that a little later, but how does that, how do we best get those in need, who need food resources, is upon, within the public transit routes? It's affordable for them because there's, the fares are free, the buses doesn't cost anything, and it's right along the route access. And what does that mean to a transit agency such as Green Mountain Express or any others? Right now, we have two lines of service. That means our Shoppers Express will have increased ridership. And the state looks at the number of riders in terms of how many riders do we actually do, not only per day, but on an annual basis, and that's based on a lot of the funding that we get from these programs. So whatever we do in terms of trying to maximize our ridership, we partner with Sunrise Family Center for the Family Support Shuttle, increased ridership. Those locations take family shopping to the laundromat, grocery shopping. So when we were approached with this, we applied for a Vermont Food Access Grant, essentially a walk-the-shop trolley. And I was very pleased, and they were very gracious in what we received in terms of that grant. I believe we received 2,500 to purchase these trolleys. We hosted a special event on August 16th at the Transit Center, and we distributed all 60 trolleys that you probably see around Bennington if you saw the little green trolleys. And one of the things we were focused on was helping the residents safely and efficiently carry their groceries home while riding the Shoppers Express. And we've done a survey and received very positive feedback from that program. And like I said, this program has extended out to Manchester as well. There is another food bank right, actually is connected to the town of Manchester, town offices. And what's great about that location is that our orange line also connects with the Rutland and movers, so that can take people up to Burlington, up to Rutland, to other food banks, excuse me, but also our microtransit is Manchester. So those who need to get to access to food, they have a means of transportation. We were honored on the last week, as a matter of fact, during a luncheon at the Manchester Library, where community members and consultants talked about their need and challenges for food access. And one of the things I like to say is that when I think about these types of initiatives, you know, sometimes you think of public transportation as driving a public route, but you don't really see, the public doesn't always really see the impact that transit agencies do and how they really affect the community. One of the things, this is our food bank up at Willow Park, and it's right along our red route, so those who want to take public transportation will pull up to the food bank, passengers will get off, who are interested in participating in the food bank and receiving food, and those are the carts, I don't know if some of you can see that, that we transport. And I'm going to close with this because this is really important. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we had to have a pandemic to kind of get to this point, you know? But our zero fare study, January of 2023, submitted, we submitted to the Vermont House and Senate Committees on Transportation. As most of you know, with the onset of the pandemic around March 2020, fares were eliminated for all transit agencies in Vermont, partly to reduce the risk of COVID exposure by increasing social distancing between drivers and passengers, but also to recognize the trying economic times to help reduce the financial burden on riders as well. Keep in mind, during the pandemic, we still ran public transportation to get these, to get individuals to critical care. Okay? So essentially, when you think about all of those drivers, those were essential employees during a very serious time in our country. The zero fare policy was extended through FY21 and '22, and the '22 session of the legislature extended the zero fare policy through FY2023. So they conducted a study, and on, and moving forward, the Vermont Legislature wants to quantify the impacts of the extending that zero fare policy into 2024, which they have, and they're looking to be doing that beyond 2024, both in terms of riderships, revenue, as well as understanding the impacts of other programs such as Medicaid transportation. And this gives, this chart gives you an idea of what the annual ridership and how it was prior to the pandemic and at the conclusion of the pandemic. And you see that by 2021, it took a nosedive drastically. And what the programs that were affected, we're looking at all commuter buses and shuttles, demand response vans, microtransit, local bus routes, tourism, volunteer drivers, and you can tell that we are starting to... And you can tell that we are starting to really hike back up. And that's because we have been aggressive and I'm proud to say that the state of Vermont and the transit agency that provides all of the services for the entire state work very closely together. We collaborate together in terms of all the services. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Questions?
Wonderful. So board members, we've just got a lot of information. You have any questions?
If I can say this, download the microtransit app right now. Give it a chance, try it out.
I do too. Go ahead.
So I just have one question on what you said about zero fare, the zero fare program. Do I understand that that is being evaluated year by year by year by the Vermont Legislature?
Yes, it is.
So it is subject to review every year?
Correct. And we have some agencies, what they are looking at is how would this look if we do away with fares altogether? You have to keep in mind, some transit agencies, when you talk of the funding resources and revenue, a lot of it's built off those fares.
Sure.
Okay, so where is the additional income or funding is going to come to replace that? So right now, we're in a very positive place in terms of having the zero fares and what that is doing to communities across the board. But I have to be honest with you, transit agencies are looking at, you know, that revenue stream as well, you know? And it just forces us to be a little bit more creative with funding sources, you know, and maximizing that.
Thank you, Terrence.
You're welcome.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a million, but I'll only ask a few.
You can ask a million.
Yeah, the first thing, I just want people to realize, anyone can ride the bus. It's not income sensitive, it's open for everyone. I don't know if anyone realizes that. Let's see. Is the microtransit to Manchester and back, is that also free right now?
All of the transportation?
All of it is free.
It's free.
Okay. And my other question about Manchester, the microtransit, is let's say you were going to go shopping for the day, can you get from, let's say, Depot Street to someplace else that's not really walkable? Can the, is there one drop off point and one pickup point?
If you are in Manchester and you are within that zone of microtransit, it will pick you up anywhere within that zone and take you to your destination.
So if you're coming from Bennington, once you get there, the same thing would apply?
Correct.
Okay, cool. And I just want to make another comment, as many of you know, I talk about it ad nauseam. I take the bus to work every day, every weekday. And the relationships between the passengers and the drivers are amazing. And I can tell you, I have learned more about compassion from the drivers than anyone else I've ever been in contact with in my life.
I appreciate that comment. And it's, that means a lot, not only to myself, but to the drivers, your name comes up a lot. You have been a loyal passenger and we appreciate that. And the goal is, and let me just say this, the goal is, is to provide that and give everyone an opportunity to use public transportation. You don't really need a vehicle. At least that's the direction that we are moving in, in terms of our path. We have options for public transportation and we're growing.
So Terrence, could I ask a question?
Sure.
This follows up on Jeans and your comment just now. I'm just thinking, there are some major, there are some employers that some people in Bennington go to work either in Arlington or in Manchester. Are there opportunities to use, to expand and sort of use the system you set up for social services for economic development, for workers from one place to another? And are you seeing that happen?
Actually, we are seeing that happen right now. Thank you for that question because we are providing transportation for passengers to get to their places of employment in Arlington and in Manchester currently.
Great, great, great. So and are you doing that through employers or is that really just employees saying that, I mean, it seems like the eight to five may or may not work.
It's a little bit of both. One of the things is, obviously, from our agency perspective, there's a commitment and outreach that goes to employers. There are employees that I haven't spoken with yet in terms of providing that service for their employees to use public transportation. For example, Macmolding. We probably transport on the daily maybe 11 passengers that go to Macmolding and others.
Perfect. That's great, that's great. Any other questions?
Terrence, one of your beginning slides showed a 20% match and then a 50/50 match.
Yeah.
And I didn't understand what that was.
Well, as I've mentioned before, during the pandemic, the state funding for all transit agencies in the state of Vermont for their operational cost was at 100%. That means the state of Vermont, along with federal money and state money, funded all transit agencies in the state based on the zero fare programming. Okay? We were informed that for FY '24, that for operation costs, since things are getting back to normal and serves the services, that those dollars would be 50/50. So what I mean by that 20% match is that the state, the Fed will give us a certain amount of dollars, the state will give us a certain amount of dollars, and the transit agencies would have to essentially come up with the rest of it. So we are looking at ways and working with the states and the feds for those funds. Also, individual state agencies and providers are looking at, looking at funding sources for themselves, fundraisers and things of that, donations, those are the types of things. Thank you.
Super. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time. Could you leave some cards before you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
So Terrence, if you want to take a seat, then we'll, for a minute, we'll take any public comments or questions and then let you address those.
There you go.
Okay. Anyone from the public have questions? Oh, good, we have a line. Okay. Clark, why don't we start with you, then Tyler, Sam, Martha?
Great, thank you. Terrence, correct?
Yes, sir.
Excellent presentation.
Terrence, I want you to sit down so that we just go through all the questions at first.
Again, Clerk Adams. That presentation I thought was excellent. One of the things that I really think the community at large needs to hear or connect to this service, this gentleman just presented, in fact, it is a service to the community. I don't think if you stopped 100 people on the street, five of them could tell you the excellent services organization it's offering a community. And, you know, I really would just encourage not just the select board, but those out in cat TV land to really get on board and find out what we can do to maintain the viability of the service. I don't know, I know we just had a discussion of the budgetary process coming up, but, you know, we need to just take a serious look at what we, the town, can do to support this organization. And nothing speaks louder than your wallet. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the work you're doing.
Tell us your name, Tyler.
Tyler Colfan, Bennington. I work in environmental policy and I also am a frequent Amtrak rider, so I really appreciate, yeah, public transit services. And as a frequent Amtrak rider, I was wondering, currently, there's only two times a day that there's connections to the Albany Rensselaer train line for long distance service. And so I was wondering if there's any opportunities to, maybe in collaboration with services in New York State, to increase that connectivity so that people can connect to the Amtrak line through public transit?
Great, great question. Sam, I think you were next.
Sam, I'm from Bennington, Vermont. I have also, when you don't have a car, public transportation comes in hand besides a bicycle or walking. There's one gentleman that really knows how to get around in public transportation, and if you see him on Facebook, his name is Alex Fairley. He should write a book. That guy, one minute he's in Massachusetts, next minute he's in North Carolina. He knows how to utilize public transportation. You ought to tap his resources. Currently, is there a bus that goes up to the Pontle Campus or the Manchester campus for SVMC? Because that's where my primary care facility is. And to get a bus to go from Bennington up there for primary care is a little difficult if a bus is not up there. And then, of course, I'm getting ahead of myself. In another 10 years, artificial intelligence is going to come into play. You're going to have driverless buses.
Thank you. Martha?
I'm also really grateful that this public service exists.
Introduce yourself again.
Oh, sorry. Martha Mackey, Bennington, Vermont. Yeah, I'm really grateful that we have a public transit service. That was one of the first things I was really excited to discover about Bennington. I have not actually used it yet, which I'm kind of mad at myself for. One thing I'd like to comment on is that I have never seen a bus stop. Like, I know they exist, but I think it would be really helpful if there were clearer bus stops with schedules, yeah, clearly visible, so that people can make these decisions on the road when they're out walking. Particularly about the microtransit, I'm curious, so obviously, getting everyone connected as much as possible is really important, but I'm wondering specifically about, you know, public transit as a way for us to reduce carbon emissions. It's a much greener mode of transit. So how does this microservice affect that overall reduction in carbon emissions and, yeah, the overall effects of traffic? Because is it increasing trips because you're going for individual people? What are the advantages and disadvantages? And can we also maybe just increase overall frequency of our bus routes?
Great. Any other questions?
Debbie Matt, Bennington. I personally do not ride the bus. I have a car. And I was wondering if the bus line has a policy of behavior for their help as well as the people that ride their bus. I have ridden the bus on trips through the senior center, many trips, and they've been very pleasant and the bus drivers have been great. But I do know, I was witness to one event where somebody missed the bus and by missing the bus, which was their own fault, got on the phone and was yelling and screaming at whoever this dispatcher was or whoever the poor person was on the other end screaming at them. And I wonder if there's a policy for any type of punishment. Personally, I'd have hung up the phone, but I don't know if the Green Mountain Line has a policy on, they shouldn't be abused.
Okay. And just to be clear, it was Green Mountain Express that was on the receiving end of that? Yes. Okay. Terrence, do you want to respond to, we have sort of a running list, so I don't know what you have, how much you held in your head, but.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure some of the select board members can enlighten me. I think I remember just a few. All fantastic questions. And I think the first one was tri-state services, you know, getting to and from Albany and other areas. That's a collaboration and part of our long-term plan is to be able to communicate and partner with the state of New York, state of Massachusetts, and to be able to have those interconnections and services that get people to Albany. And right now, we do have that service if you choose that you want to travel to Albany and elsewhere. We do have the Vermont Trans Lines, we have Yankee Trails, and they all meet right at the Transit Center to take you to these destinations or Albany hubs. For example, the airport, bus station, train station, things of that nature. And I think the other question was related to transportation in Manchester, if I'm correct, in terms of certain locations. We have, you have to understand, now that we have the microtransit service available, most of those locations around Depot Street, medical facilities, when we designed the zone, we had that in mind. So say, for example, you didn't have a car and you needed to get to your medical appointment in Manchester, it's one of two ways you can do that. Use our on-demand service, okay? That means you call the transit agency, you book your appointment, we provide the service for you. Or you may take that orange line to Manchester. Once you hit the designated location in Manchester, you simply book your appointment from that destination through microtransit and it takes you directly to your location. And I, I'm sorry, I forgot the other question.
Are there, are the bus stops marked and are there schedules?
So where was one before that as well? Yeah.
To answer your question, yes, thank you, Jonah. We do have bus schedules. We do have a variety of bus locations that have shelters, but we need to improve on making sure that all of our stops have bus stops and shelters. And we're working on that, too. We have a list of those that have been identified.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that where I get picked up is not a designated stop, but it's right on the route. I'm standing in a safe location, the driver can pick me up safely. So it's not like you have to be at a specific stop as long as you're along the route and you're in a safe place.
And the bus will deviate slightly to make sure to pick you up.
So Terrence, the other part of that question was, does microtransit increase, does it actually decrease the use of cars and pollution?
Yes.
Because you're driving around?
Yes, and thank you. That was a great question, by the way, because when we did the feasibility study for microtransit, that was key in terms of reducing those carbons as opposed to using the diesel and gas buses. So yes. And right now, we have two designated vehicles that we're looking at for microtransit, which is our cutaway buses as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we are moving forward in the next five years to try to replace our entire fleet with electrical buses.
Super. And then the last was, how do you handle, I guess, disgruntled individuals or behavioral issues?
Well, we run, that's a great question. And we run into that on a few occasions where people were unhappy about a service or a driver or another passenger on the bus. And you're going to run into instances such as that. Two things, safety is always at the forethought of what we do in terms of providing service to the public, mainly for the passengers and also for our drivers. All of our buses are equipped with surveillance in terms of incidents on the bus. We also have our drivers go through annual refresher training in terms of past training and de-escalation training and how to deal with passengers, as well as our staff in the office who are on the receiving end of some of those calls, which sometimes are quite unpleasant. But I'm so proud of the staff, always professional in dealing with those types of incidents. We do have a policy in place through VPTA that governs the We do have a policy in place through VPTA that governs the behavior of passengers, especially as it relates to Medicaid passengers. I think most of you probably know that part of our services is that we provide services for those individuals that are struggling with drugs and alcohol here in Bennington, and we get them to recovery centers. So we have a bus that's dedicated for that service as well. That's what I mean about human services. We find ourselves involved in every part of critical life. And, you know, I always say, "public transportation," but when you talk about the essentials of life, that's what we do. Hope I answered your question.
This was very informative. Thank you very, very much for taking the time to come tonight and share information.
My pleasure. I won't wait so long next time.
Thank you. That's wonderful.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next up, Putnam Block Redevelopment Final Public Meeting or Hearing. Shannon, you're up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I'm Shannon Barsati, Community Development Director for the town. So we're here tonight to talk about the Putnam Block redevelopment, also known as Putnam Phase One. In particular, this is the final public hearing for the community development block grant funds. The town receives funds through the state. These are originally federal funds through Housing and Urban Development. So the town received 1.25 million in community development block grant funding for the Putnam Redevelopment Project from the state of Vermont through the Vermont Community Development Program. These funds are now coming to a close, so they've all been expended. And this is the final public hearing to discuss the use of the funds, which is a requirement for any projects that are funded through CDBG grants. So thanks to M&amp;S Development and Megan at M&amp;S who collected some of this data. So I report back to the state. And the way that the CDBG grants work is that the town receives the funds and then they're sub-granted to another entity. So in this case, for the Putnam Block, these funds were sub-granted to BCIC, the Bennington County Industrial Corporation, which is the real estate entity holding these properties. And the redevelopment project of the Putnam Block included the acquisition and rehabilitation of three mixed-use historic commercial buildings located at 101 and 109 South Street and 335 Main Street. As a result of the project's activities, 35 new jobs were created. Brownfield sites on the property were also remediated with additional private and public funding. So some of these numbers indicate what were the national objectives that were coming through Housing and Urban Development for this particular funding. So the number one was economic development. So the number of businesses assisted that were proposed originally were three, ultimately five businesses were assisted through these funds. The number of jobs created were 35, so that was the projection and it was the actual. Now, the number of low-to-moderate income jobs proposed was 28 and actual was 21. So that was a little bit under, but still was 60% of those jobs. And HUD requires at least 51% of the beneficiaries to be low-to-moderate income, so they did meet that goal. And then the second goal of the funding was to eliminate slums and blight. So all three of these parcels were in rough shape. You know, many had, some of the buildings actually had to be torn down, rebuilt, hadn't been, you know, there hadn't been any occupancy in a number of the buildings as well. And those were all three. Nine businesses were assisted by the redevelopment. Five of the nine businesses created new jobs. Five of the nine businesses were either new or expanded businesses. And 12 persons were unemployed prior to taking jobs created with this grant funding. And the number of retained jobs is estimated to be 60. So this is just a snapshot of sort of where the CDBG funds fall in the very complex funding stack that ultimately funded the Putnam Redevelopment Project. So ultimately, the project was closer to 32 million in total funds because there were some cost overruns due to the pandemic. And so that 1.5 million in additional costs was also funded through private equity. So this just gives you an idea of kind of how the percentages of funding, where they came from. The CDBG grant that flowed through the town was 4% of the overall funding. And then this is some data collected by M&amp;S of the environmental remediation that was done at the site, which is significant. It was all done in compliance with the Department of Environmental Conservation and a corrective action plan. You know, this is an old building site. It had a number of different industries. There was removal of, you know, old fuel oil and gasoline underground storage tanks. So a lot of the soil surrounding that had to be completely excavated and removed to a different site because it was contaminated soil. So that also paves the way for the next phases of the Putnam Redevelopment, Phase Two and Three, because of that remediation that's been done. So I'm not going to go through each one of these, but there's really been a significant amount of work that's been done on the site. And then just some before and after photos. So up on your left, this is, you know, the Putnam Hotel back in the day when it had the beautiful porches around it, and you can see the old trolley line running down the center of Main Street. And then these are more recent, you know, right before the redevelopment. You can see the condition, particularly on the backside of the Putnam Project. As someone who works right next door at the town office, just seeing that transformation take place was really pretty astounding because you can see, you can't see these photos that well, but in the lower left there, I can't remember the name of that building. I know Bill Colvin might refresh our memory on that, but that was so deteriorated that it could, you know, it couldn't be occupied and it had to be removed. And then there's some photos of kind of the demolition happening. And then we have some photos of the exterior and interior today after the redevelopment. So, you know, really, lots of work done on the facade to brighten it up and welcome the new businesses and some of the businesses that were here but that moved, such as the Bennington Bookshop. And then these are office spaces in the lower right. And then the beautiful aerial photo, so you can see the backside of the Putnam Block that I was just mentioning and what it looks like today with the public parking and some green space, as well as a welcoming entrance both to the housing and the commercial sites. And then the front of the property. It really is just a jewel of downtown, so it's, and, you know, this has taken so much investment, but it also is spurring other investment in Bennington. So the Putnam Block. I don't know if you have any other questions about the funding. I also have, Bill Colvin is here from the BCRC to answer any big-picture questions that you have.
Questions, please. So the 60 jobs that were retained, are those like construction positions? There were 35 new jobs and 60 retained?
No, the retained jobs are all of the different businesses that are currently there occupying.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. And this doesn't even talk about the housing?
Yeah, this, well, this funding didn't go towards the housing, so that's why I didn't really get into that.
Yeah.
You know, it specifically was focused on economic development.
Yeah, but that's such an amazing story, too. So it's wonderful, wonderful. So no questions? Well, let me see, anyone from the audience have questions? Yes, Mary, please come up.
Mary Morrissey, Bennington. I just wondered, there was a line item that said debt, 7 point some million. Could you explain that or how that will be paid if it's ongoing debt?
Can I enlist you up here, Bill? I think he's going to speak to that.
And if you can sort of give, yeah, I guess.
Actually, you can go right there.
Repeat the question or.
Sure. Hi, good evening. Bill Colvin, Director of the Bennington County Regional Commission and the Bennington County Industrial Corporation, it's a real estate holding company controlled by BCRC and the nominal owner of the Putnam Block. I believe the question from Representative Morrissey was about the $7.5 million of debt that was shown on that capital stack. Those are the loans that have been secured by the investors and which are being repaid as part of the typical development process. So there are three separate loans on that property, which totaled roughly $7.5 million at the outset, less than that now. But that's debt which is secured by the property and being paid by the investors.
Super. Thank you. Other questions? Sam, please come up.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. As you know, on Phase One, we still have vacancies for some time on West Main Street. Any updates on nibbles of businesses going in there? We do need more brick-and-mortar businesses on Main Street and downtown area.
Thanks very much, Sam. So we didn't talk about the residential, and I should just briefly talk about residential. As part of this project, 31 new residential units were created. We completed, or construction was officially completed November 30th of 2020. On December 1st, 31 families began moving in. They have been full since the inception of the project, and there remains a waiting list for those units. And I will note that those are both a mix of affordable workforce housing and market-rate apartments there. So 31 families moving in. As Mr. Rustino noted, there are some remaining vacancies. It's challenging. The retail environment is difficult. The pandemic certainly didn't help with regard to filling those spaces. However, the other challenge really has been cost of construction. In three separate occasions, letters of intent have been signed to fill those spaces. And when the tenant was faced with the cost to complete their portion of the fit-up beyond that, which is being contributed by the landlord, they had to back out of the deal. They simply couldn't afford it. The project team has applied for a community recovery and reinvestment grant. We hope to learn by the end of this month if we're successful there for a little more than half a million dollars. That money, if secured, would be utilized to bring the remaining spaces to an increased level of readiness to move in, to accept tenants. There are currently six interested parties in various levels of discussion around those spaces. We're pretty confident that if that grant is secured and additional fit-up money can be brought, that one or more of those will be successful.
And I'll just add that Megan at M&amp;S Development let me know that the bespoke salon is going to be expanding. So they're taking the space that I think the barber shop used to be in as well. So they've been doing really well in that space, and they're going to expand.
Excellent. All right. Other questions? Yes, Bill?
So not a question, but an expression of thanks to the town for its ongoing support of the project. As Shannon noted, this was an incredibly complex project to bring together. We do believe it's also been really meaningful, both in terms of rehabilitating those properties, bringing new vitality to downtown and spurring additional related investment. The town has been a critical partner in this effort, and we certainly are very appreciative of the town's efforts to date, and we're hopeful going forward as well. So thank you.
Thank you. The town is equally grateful to all the work that the partners have put into doing this. All right, so, oh, sure, go ahead.
I just want to mention that back in the end of June or the beginning of July of 2016, when, Bill, your organization hosted that first public press conference, and the opportunity that was presented was not, it couldn't have been imagined. And I think you all should be very proud of what you accomplished in what really is a very short period of time. We love spending time at the Putnam Block now with all that it has to offer and all the promise that it has for the future, so I'm very grateful.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you very much, Shannon.
Thank you.
And then next is the Planning Commission update, which is Dan or Janet?
Janet. I'm going to just introduce Janet.
Okay, all right.
So I'll get out of here right away. I just wanted to kind of upset, set up Janet's presentation. So you folks remember that over a year ago now, this board, at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, committed to update the town plan with a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, making sure that all voices in our community were heard and were incorporated in the new town plan. After considering a proposal from the Bennington County Regional Commission, the Planning Commission did choose BCRC to undertake Phase One of our town plan update. I'm going to let Janet talk about what that includes, as well as what Phase Two is going to be. And so I'm going to introduce Janet Hurley with the Bennington County Regional Commission, who is leading up this effort on behalf of BCRC. Thank you, Janet.
So I don't have to say hi, I'm Janet Hurley from BCRC. And just to follow up on what Dan just said, actually, I'm shorter, so. This first phase is essentially a public engagement effort to inform a new town plan for the town. Oh, I need this. How do I turn it on, Jonah? Oh, it works, or it's already on. Okay, so in light of the town's commitment to inclusion and its DAI efforts of late, this first phase of the town plan update will focus on seeking input from as many people in the Bennington community as possible, with particular outreach to underrepresented and vulnerable members of the community. The town applied for and received a municipal planning grant for this Phase One effort, which will take us through the next year. The town has applied for a second municipal planning grant to fund Phase Two efforts, which would take the information gained from this public outreach phase, together with data on demographics, natural resources, and public services to craft a new town plan. Your current plan expires in January of 2026, so the goal is to have a new plan adopted by January 2026. So here's a breakdown of the Phase One tasks and timeline. Tasks one through five have already been tackled, and we are currently in the public outreach implementation phase, Tasks Six and Seven. And this public outreach will serve as the basis for the new town plan. Jonah has launched a webpage on the town website that summarizes the project and will serve as a clearinghouse for information as we move along. What are we hoping to get from this public outreach? We hope to learn from people throughout the community what they love about Bennington and what they want for Bennington's future. Reaching out to all segments of the community will help ensure a plan that is reflective of the whole community. We aim to have a variety of different types of activities, using different venues, different times throughout the week, to catch as many people as possible. All of the various activities will try to get at what policies participants think should guide the town into the future. So the next several slides will introduce you to these outreach activities that we have planned for the next three to four months, starting with small group discussions. Asher attended the most, the first one of these, but these are designed to reach some of the most vulnerable or previously underrepresented members of the community. We are facilitating these small group discussions in conjunctions with local community service agencies. Our first was held last week with disabled members of the Bennington community. It was a productive conversation that led. It was a productive conversation that led to many ideas, some of which you heard earlier, for improving access to town government and facilities, as well as local businesses and other public services. The Bennington office of the Vermont Center for Independent Living worked with BRCRC staff to arrange this first group discussion. Our next focus group will be held tomorrow afternoon with parents of young children at the Sunrise Family Resource Center. This is in conjunction with a regularly scheduled parent meeting that the center holds. We are working with other community partners, such as the Senior Center, Queer Connect, BCOA Refugee Resettlement, Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless, on finalizing details for potential other small group discussions. We are launching a brief survey that will be available online and in hard copy formats through the next few months of public outreach work. This QR code will guide community members to the survey. We will also provide a URL link to the online survey, unprinted, and online outreach materials. The survey asks what respondents love about Bennington, what they would like to see changed, and where the town's priorities should lie for the future. Another activity involves asking people to imagine sending a postcard from Bennington in 2050 to Bennington in 2023. The postcard would underscore what policies in the new town plan helped make Bennington a great place to live, work, or play in the future. We produced a fun video in cooperation with the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union, the SVSU, which will help disseminate the activity into the local public schools. In the video, BRCRC planner Samantha Page talks about the town plan with Bennington's first elected official, John Facet, from 1761. You may recognize John Facet's doppelganger in the room here.
1762.
Oh, was it 62? Sorry, John. We will set up tables at various venues to engage people to complete the survey or a postcard, and ask them to interact with a map of Bennington or share written comments. We are working on scheduling these for places like the Pleasant Street Bus Terminal, the Meals on Wheels Bennington Cafe, also on Pleasant Street, the VFW CCV, the REC Center. We are looking to schedule tableings at Walmart, Price Chopper, the Community Market, and local healthcare facilities. These will offer quick, interactive opportunities to engage people around town throughout the winter. Finally, we will be holding a series of community-wide public meetings. Each will be held at a different venue, time, and day of the week to try to maximize the number of people who can attend without conflicts. In addition to four in-person meetings, we will hold one remote-only meeting. The four in-person venues are the REC Center, Mount Anthony Middle School, the Bennington Free Library, and this venue here. We will encourage people of all ages and backgrounds to take part in these meetings. Refreshments will be provided, and we have childcare avail, and we will have childcare available as needed. We're modeling these community roundtable conversations on a format that the town of Williston recently used for their town planning effort. As such, the larger group will be broken into smaller working groups with table captains that will guide discussion on the various policy areas addressed in the town plan. Table captains will include BRCRC staff, town staff, planning commissioners, and if any select board members are interested in serving as table captains, let us know. The small groups in these meetings will then report back to the full group, and other full group activities will solicit additional input from participants. These meetings will be fast-paced and fun, we hope, and we hope to see some of you participating in them. We will ask for registration to these meetings so that we can adequately prepare for each of them in terms of numbers of people and any particular accommodations requested. So this is an online registration form that we devised. So after all of this outreach, by the end of April, we will combine the information garnered into a summary, Task 8. This summary will serve as the basis for preparing a thematic outline for the new town plan, Task 9. And once this outline has been drafted, we will present it and the summarized outreach findings at a public meeting in May. After that public meeting, we will revise the thematic outline and present that to the town by the end of May. This is just a depiction of some of the outreach materials that we're developing, the postcard in the back, a bookmark that will have the dates for all of the public meetings listed on it, and a flyer that will do the same. So help us imagine what Bennington will be in 2050. 300, 301 years, or two, after its founding? Or is it 300? 311? Okay. Bad, bad math.
Over 300 is a good way to guess.
So imagine that, but also help craft those policies that will get us there. So that's, that's the update, and I guess you want me to sit down? You'll take questions?
Stay there for a second.
Okay.
Anyone from the select board have questions? This is great to hear.
Okay.
It's really exciting. Jane?
I talk a lot. I don't remember how many years ago, you guys might remember. When we did our community survey, we got kind of dinged on the teen population feeling like they weren't really a part of decision-making, and I don't exactly how the question was worded. So, and I'm not saying you're not attempting to get their feedback, but if there's an opportunity to maybe go a little bit above and beyond to get their input would be great, and I'm sure the REC Center or the SVSU would be most helpful. I know the locations, you know, lend themselves to the kids being there, but anyway, I just, I always have them in mind when we're making these big decisions that are going to be in place for decades, that we really, having their input is really, and it just makes them feel really connected to the community, which is always good.
Right. And so the promotional videos that Jonah and Sam did, they're going to every school in town, and they, the SVSU thinks that teachers will disseminate that information into their classrooms before Christmas break, for the most part, and those-
And ask for feedback?
Yeah.
Great.
They're, they're asking those kids to do the postcard activity. They're telling those kids, you know, what is a town plan? Why is it important? And why we want them to be involved?
Right.
And essentially telling them, you are the future of Bennington. That's why we want your input.
So they can do that, and they're going to do that, but they could also go to the-
Yeah, yeah. And we'll provide these materials for the schools. One, one of the tabling events that we've been thinking about is tabling at a high school basketball game. So we're, we're there.
You're on it.
Yeah. Well, I don't know how on it we are, but we are thinking about it. We'll see how successful we are.
You can only try.
Yeah.
I mean-
I'm glad you pointed out the outreach materials here at the end of your program. I'm wondering how you are going to make sure that these materials reach as many people as possible. And I was also wondering, when you, when you listed the target groups earlier in the program, it occurred to me there was a little bit of crossover between a lot of them, and also even within the groups as to where they might gather, like, for example, you mentioned a meeting at the Senior Center, and we've seen data that shows there are a lot of people utilizing senior programs at the REC Center that aren't using the Senior Center.
Yep.
So are we making sure that those people are reached?
Right.
To let them know that those things are going on?
Right. So we intend to do these tabling events around town. We'll have all of these materials at those events. We, at, we're disseminating this information at the early focus group meetings that we've started having, and there is definitely cross-representation in that list, and we're not necessarily holding a meeting for those particular groups of people, but we want to be sure to reach out to, you know, with our local partners, with organizations that serve various groups or subgroups of, of the community. And, you know, based on our conversations with those partners, we'll, you know, we'll settle on how many of those group meetings we're going to have, and where and who are we going to reach with them.
And Janet, it seems like this is a great venue to let organizations know that if they are interested in having their clients involved-
Right.
Or, or people they advocate for-
Right.
That they can reach out to you.
Right. Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. Just getting the word out is the key piece.
Yep.
Always.
Do you have a registration form for the roundtable discussions? If someone's a slacker and decides at the last minute they want to go-
We won't turn them away.
Good question.
No, but I mean, so that we are most ready for, you know, for those meetings, I think registering, encouraging people to register ahead is, is going to be best, so.
All right. So now you can, you can sit down.
Okay.
And we'll see if there are any questions from the community. Sam, I see you have one. Come on up. And then Maru.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. Obviously, we've got a lot of work to do, and it's all engagement. Would you like help and engagement? I'll get you there. I'm Italian, and we have a saying. If you have food, they will come. I'll help you. I'll get pizza. Whatever said meeting there, I will get pizza. It has already happened. We had that one with C-Park, which was a listening meeting, and we broke for pizza, and I was elated to hear the conversation, the chatter, the room level, the decibel level of people talking. The second was at Beth L. in October on the homeless. There again, we had pizza, and we talked, and we ate. So me with my Italian heritage, if you have food, they will come, and I will get you there. We've got a lot of work to do, and it all involves engagement. This is your town, not my town, your town. I'm speaking to the ones out there that are watching. Engage.
Thank you, Sam. Maru?
Hi, Maru Leon, Bennington, Vermont, and I want to thank the Bennington Planning Commission for the previous town plan or the one that we currently have, and the one that is being worked on now. And I just want to emphasize, as a resident who's very concerned about the protecting the view shed and the natural beauty of our town, and the importance of specifying in this new town plan, all of the areas, not that it's just on a prominent hillside, but when it comes to the roundtables that have to do with energy, that we address in very specific form, all of the areas that will affect if solar is installed, that will affect the view shed forever. So I think it's important that we communicate this as much as we can to promote community engagement, to attend these meetings, to attend the roundtables and surveys. And I think Shannon showed a beautiful photo of the top of the Potnum redevelopment, and that was a perfect area to put solar on, all those rooftops, and not in, you know, in Apple Hill or in all these other beautiful areas in our town that would be a-
Or Old Bennington.
Yes, or Old Bennington, exactly. So I just wanted to thank, and hopefully we get a lot of community support for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments? Nancy, please come up.
Nancy White, Bennington. First, I'd like to know if you have arranged for CAT TV to cover the Planning Commission meetings? I've been asking about a year and a half. I haven't checked in the past couple of months.
Nancy, Nancy, that is off topic. So right now, we are-
Well, actually, we're talking about updating the town plan and reaching out to as many different people and groups as we can, and the Planning Commission meetings are as important as the select board. The public should have easy access to those meetings. To understand the town plan, you should be able to see the Planning Commission meetings. They aren't accessible at 3:30 in the afternoon in the back office of the Town Hall, and I think it's critical, if you want people to be involved, to watch the very meetings, that everything is branching off of.
Okay.
Very concerned that your public meetings aren't going to cover crime. The large meetings, crime, many are concerned in Bennington. Nothing about economic development. Many of us who've grown up in Bennington are very concerned about how this town has become so dependent each year, more and more, on the state and federal government subsidies. Seldom do you ever hear anyone trying to go out and get new businesses, private sector businesses, small light industries, start off and try to get A10, 12, light manufacturing. We never hear about that in Bennington anymore. Affordability, what does it mean to be a homeowner in this town? Every year, it gets worse, and all we hear is we need more programs to help with this, that, and the other, and, and all of these costs are bearing onto the homeowner. And I'd like to have somebody make public within the next couple of weeks, give us in Bennington eight to 10 examples of what we would see in a town plan with DEI, so people can understand what that means, so people can start to think about it now and think about over the next year. Is this something that we're all going to buy into?
So Janet, do you want to respond to, I'm just thinking particularly the topics to be covered in the town plan and how the town, maybe how the town, town plan works?
How the, so, I mean, some of these conversations at the meetings will be what people bring to them. If people want to talk about crime, they'll be, it'll be talked about. If people want to talk about, you know, affordability, that will get talked about. I assume that housing affordability will get talked about. It's one of the biggest issues that any Vermont community, let alone any national community, is facing right now. There are also some required elements in a town plan, statutorily required by Vermont law, so we will, you know, try to get information on those topics, but it won't exclude other issues that people, you know, I mean, we're asking, we're asking kids to, you know, imagine what they want Bennington to be, look, to look like or feel like or, or be like in the future, and that, you know, it's open-ended, and it's, it's going to be open-ended for most, every participant, so.
And then I think also it might be helpful to talk about the, why the DEI lens, the diversity lens, that, how that plays out in terms of the town plan.
That's how the project was envisioned by the town leadership, and that's what the municipal planning grant proposed, and that's what got funded. And in fact, the, one of the first, well, I, I could put it back up, but one of the first tasks was to assess the current plan and other town planning and policy materials in light of your DEI focus. And I think on the webpage that Jonah put up, there's a link to a document. Yeah, so, yeah, those first tasks resulted in a, a list of- Yeah, so, yeah, those first tasks resulted in a list of recommendations, having looked at those documents through a DEI lens, and that is available on the webpage for the town plan update.
So is it, is it accurate to say that the DEI lens, so diversity, equity, inclusion lens, is a way to broaden out those who participate in putting the plan together so that we're looking at that, not just one segment of the community as we put a plan together, but we're looking at, we're looking broadly?
Yeah, that's part of it, but then this document that I'm referring to is a list of recommendations from BCRC and the DEI consultant that worked with the BCRC about how, you know, what things might change in the plan to help you get that inclusive, inclusiveness as part of the plan, so...
And that is on the website?
That's...
Put that on the website.
I'm almost, yeah, it's on the website, yeah.
And I highly recommend anybody interested in the specifics of how DEI might impact Bennington's town plan, go to that document. It's an excellent document. The Planning Commission is very pleased with it, and staff is very pleased with it. Go read it. It will definitely articulate what DEI needs.
All right, okay, and I think that answers the question of wanting to see examples, so that document is up there.
Right, and, and, I mean, all of this outreach in the next, you know, three to four months, when people, you know, like as Asher put forth a little bit earlier, you know, there are things that the town can do that are maybe low-hanging fruit that might come across in the plan to increase access to people who currently find it difficult to participate in town government or public services or whatever, so, yeah.
And if we have suggestions, I mean, I think Nancy's comment made me think about, for instance, the Bennington County Workforce and Education Group, which is largely Bennington workforce folks, that, you know, if there are other groups that we want to make sure that are not, they don't need their own meeting, but that...
Right.
Make sure we get outreach.
So that, so that...
So that we can give input.
We can, those partners can help disseminate this information to invite their constituents to participate in these meeting, these upcoming meetings and activities that we're holding.
I just want to say that, you know, every meeting we read, Tom reads the vision statement, and this is putting that vision statement into practice in a very real way.
Yes, absolutely. Anything else on there? So, and these small meetings, how, if people aren't able to come to these roundtables, will there be minutes taken for all of these that then become...
We're going to summarize all of this outreach. You know, there will be a final presentation in May. This is phase one. You know, phase two, hopefully we will, you will receive funding through the municipal planning grant, and that will fund an effort to actually draft the town plan. Then there will be more public meetings through 2024 and 2025, giving you time to finalize a plan before January of 2026.
Lots of public input.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be lots of opportunity in the next few years.
Anything else from us? Yeah, all right, all right. Thank you so much.
Yep.
This is great. We're very excited this is happening. All right, and now we are at the manager's report.
Thank you. The first item I want to talk about, we don't have any action items tonight, so we should be able to move through this fairly quickly. Putting on my hat as the tree warden, I am announcing that there are two trees, one at 622 Main Street, another at 626. They are old lindens that have grown so large that they have raised the surrounding sidewalk slab from four to six inches. It has been recommended that they be both removed. The one at 626 will be replaced with an appropriate street tree, but this should make that area much safer and much more accessible to folks on the sidewalk. So I wanted to get that word out just in case people have concerns. The second issue, our Growth Center review report has been accepted by the Vermont Downtown Development Board, which means that we continue to meet the standards for downtown development designation, and at some point in a future meeting, either Dan, Shannon, and/or Jonah will be making a presentation on that particular effort to this board. And the last item, we did hear some comment this, earlier this in meeting, in this meeting to what would happen if we could level fund budgets, what would we have to lose? And unfortunately, if you've been following on Vermont Digger Act 127, which was passed last year, which is meant to re-allocate education funding more equitably among the various school districts based on the need of the students, will have an impact on Bennington. We're hopeful that that impact may be positive because Bennington has been identified as a school district with needs. But this recent article in Vermont Digger projected from a state economist, a raise in school taxes of 18 and 1/2% this year, principally due to inflation, expiration of pandemic funding, an increase in healthcare costs, and potential payments for school renovation and construction costs. So when we look at our town budget, we often look at it with an eye to what the impact will be overall. Also, we have little or no control over what happens with the school district's funding issues, but I think people should understand that this is going to be a very difficult year. We're going to do what we can to minimize any tax increase, and hopefully some growth in the grand list will mitigate some of this impact. But what Act 127 will do for Bennington, if anything, is not yet known, and I'll close with that.
All right. Any questions, manager? Okay. All right, well, that's a foreshadowing of the next meeting, right? So upcoming agendas on the 18th, we were keeping it to be a quick meeting. We have warrants, but you're planning to present the budget?
Just a brief presentation. I hope to have that budget packet ready for all of you, and I'll be handing it out to you and therefore to the, to the press as well. God willing, and the crick don't rise. It's crunch time for us here at the town offices.
Yeah, all right. And then on January 6th, we'll start the budget meetings, that's that first Saturday in January, and then on the 8th, we have the annual audit...
Yes.
...presentation coming up. Community Cafe is going to present, and I believe the community, community survey results also, yes? Okay, good.
And at some point in January, we'd like to bring the Bennington Police Department back.
And, and we should, yes, the police department.
Whether or not that, the 8th is a pretty crowded agenda, as you just highlighted, but we'll see when we can get them in.
Okay, okay. All right, all right, so, anything else, other business?
I just want to mention that we heard the Bennington Free Library make the announcement that Lynn McCann has announced her retirement, and I, after having worked with her in a lot of community engagement over the last almost 20 years, I wanted to publicly thank her for her service and congratulate her, and I wanted to reach out to the Board of the Library for any assistance that this board can be.
So Gary is on to the, to the board?
That's a, that's an important spot.
He's on it, yes, he is on it.
Let us know how we can help, Gary.
And also, if you haven't, if you haven't gone downtown at night, it is gloriously beautiful. Somehow, it's more beautiful this year than in past years. I don't know how. It is fantastic. All right, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.